Good evening and welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting for April 23rd, 2018. I thank all of you that are watching. As I stated, the last Board of Selectmen's meeting, that it was Chairman Kincaid's agenda. I stated that I would make an opening statement at tonight's meeting of what I would like to see the board work on this year. It's no secret that I've come out and I've talked about blighted properties in the community. I've talked about coming to the beautiful town of Milford, using as an example for a wedding with all the beautiful churches that we have. You accidentally get off at the Route 85 exit and the first intersection you come into is the old gas station on your left-hand side. Town Administrator, thank you very much, Rick Vilani, has been very actively working on that. We have another piece of property down the old Archer Rubber Company. I'm not saying that we're going to do anything with it. I think we need to look at it. But I think my fellow board members would agree with me with what we just went through this year is that, you know, there are a lot of good, good people in this town that pay their taxes on time, sometimes a little bit late. But how many properties are in this town that haven't had their taxes paid on? And, no, as Chairman of your Board of Selectmen, no, I don't want to take your property and I don't want to take you home. But I do want to bring you in and I want you to understand that we need to, we need to have open, open conversation. And so that's something that I want to look at. And my final statement tonight is that there's been a little bit of conversation around town is, and we had the Fire Chief here earlier tonight, is how safe is our community? And, and how good are our services? And I have to tell you, in my opinion, I put my head on the bed every single night and I know that I'm safe in this community. And I know that if I call 911 and I need a paramedic, I need a policeman, it's the finest, finest service that I think you can find. And so with my fellow board members, I say these, these are my agenda items for the year. I think these are things that we need to work on. I think that you all will help me through the year. I greatly appreciate it. And with that, I say thank you, thank you to all of you. And the first order of business we have tonight is we have Girl Scouts with us. So, and Mrs. Wheelock, would you, you're on.
All right, great. Thanks for having us tonight. This is Cadet Girl Scout Troop 11276. Many of the girls in this troop are in sixth and seventh grade and they've been involved with Girl Scouting since they were in kindergarten. So, and it's been a little while, and eighth year, seventh, eighth year, right? And we are here tonight for an official proclamation to celebrate Arbor Day. April 27th is Arbor Day every year. And it's the first step for a big project, a long-term project for the troop. We're working with Mr. Renaud, the Tree Warden. First step is to have the proclamation to recognize April 27th as Arbor Day in Milford. Second step is a big service project. On Saturday, we're giving away over 300 tree seedlings to celebrate Arbor Day and to help this, the, the community to get free trees so they can put them in their property. And the third step is to work together to help Milford become a member of Tree City USA. So, there's a kind of a long-term thing that will go out through the summer. But we are here to thank you for recognizing Arbor Day, which is the first step for this big service project.
And how about any of the girls? Would you like to have, say something?
It's our third step. It's our third step in our breathing journey, which is about cleaner air and learning about the pollution that we cause and how trees, plants, things of leaves can help them there.
Very nice, very nice. Well, let me, let me read the proclamation. It's a little bit long, so give me a second. So, "The Commonwealth of Massachusetts celebrates Arbor Day on the last Friday in April of each year. And on April 27, 2018, Massachusetts will observe another Arbor Day, giving its citizens an opportunity to plant trees and celebrate the gifts that community trees give all year long. The town of Milford recommends itself to its community's streetscapes and forest and seeks to become a better steward of its community trees. Milford establishes trees as a priority for the town and will endeavor to make good decisions about their care and management. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, Michael K. Walsh, William D. Buckley, and William E. Kincaid Jr., as Selectmen of the town of Milford, Massachusetts, proclaim Arbor Day, April 27, 2018, to be a day of celebration in our town. On this day, we shall be thoughtful of the roles trees play in improving the quality of our neighborhoods, streets, yards, and lives, and shall respect our trees as a great natural resource and contributes to the cycle of life. In witness, we hereby set our hands and cause the seal of the town of Milford to be affixed this 23rd day of April in the year of our Lord, 2018. Michael K. Walsh, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, William D. Buckley, Board of Selectmen, and William, I'm sorry, William E. Kincaid, Board of Selectmen." You're welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. We're very excited.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
Nice job. Thank you for everything. Thank you.
Congratulations, girls.
Thank you for helping out today.
Oh, Chuck Renaud, I'm sorry.
No, I just want to say thank you to the board and thank you very much.
Come on right up here, Chuck.
To the girls for all the help. It's been interesting and we're going to work in the future with them to, to get more trees planted in town. And I think that will be very helpful to the town.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Nice job, ladies. Thank you, Brenda.
Okay, first agenda item is signing the warrant.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the warrant.
I'll second that.
And I will vote in affirmative. Next agenda item is approval of the minutes for April 9th.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
And I will vote affirmative with that as well. Next agenda item is invitation to speak. Is there anybody here for invitation to speak? And seeing nobody here, the next agenda item is public hearings. There are no public hearings. Next agenda item is scheduled appointments. First one is Finance Director, Zach Taylor and Tommy Brown. And the Chairman of the Finance Committee, Mr. Chris Warren.
Good evening.
Good evening. Long time no see.
Yeah. So, I'm in, we're in tonight to talk a little bit about town meeting, which is rapidly approaching. We had a meeting earlier to talk about some budget items and it's coming together pretty FinCom standpoint, they have a meeting on Wednesday. They've taken up about approximately half of the budgets and seeming awfully ambitious to get through the rest of them. That way we can get Town Clerk, all the paperwork so she can get it out on time and we'll be ready for the May 14th annual town meeting. Couple of things I wanted to talk about. I did send out a memo to the board on Friday describing my article that will be at the annual town meeting, that will be looking to transfer funds from surplus bond proceeds from the Geriatric Authority, reconstruction back in 2006, to the Woodland School project, which is in need of an additional appropriation. So, seemed like really good timing. It's somewhat of a complicated article. It's permissible due Chapter 44, Section 20, which it's basically the only available option that we have to handle surplus bond proceeds is to transfer it to a like-kind project of similar bondable nature. We have one right now. It's just really good timing. So, that's what that, my article is going to seek at town meeting. However, I wanted to clarify the aftermath of that because I'm sure there's questions related to the fact that Geriatric Authority will be repaying that bond still in the full entirety and kind of the fairness factor of how do we get them, the approximate $365,000 of which we're going to transfer for the use of Woodland in the hands of the Geriatric Authority. So, throughout my memo, I did give you a couple of options and I gave you my recommendation that I would propose that an agreement between the Board of Selectmen and the trustees of the Geriatric Authority will develop some terms. The one I'm recommending would be to forgive reimbursement of the numerous debt service payments that would be obligated of them at the start of fiscal 19, to the extent that it would recover the $365,000. I wonder if there are any questions on that first.
Okay.
Okay, great. So, that'll happen at town meeting. It's a good thing from all standpoints and it actually made its way into our goals and objectives for the year. So, with that said, I wanted to jump to that document. Back in January of the current year, we did talk about the goals and objectives.
Zach, just one second. Zach, just want the, the motion on that?
It's up to the board. It would be nice to acknowledge.
Which article is it in?
It's 28. No. It was 22.
22.
Because I was going to ask about that under Old Business.
Article 22. So, you know, to be safe, let's say.
We don't need to because actually we can handle that under Old Business.
Okay.
Because there might be a few articles that we want to support, so.
And then the actual agreement would take place after town meeting does approve this article. And then after that, I would imagine you'd have the trustees in and you'd formalize an agreement at that point.
Great.
Okay, so as I mentioned, we did have that presented in January of 2018 as part of the fiscal 19 goals and objectives. And I wanted to segue right to that document and kind of review the reality of most of these points that we are hitting on and they will be happening, the majority of which at the annual town meeting. I'm just going to go through them quick. Again, we're going to clear the snow and ice deficits, approximately $450,000. Now, we have the available free cash to do so. We still have targeted 3.2 million of excess levy capacity. Now, we will be required to use some free cash to hit that target, which is actually what happens every year. So, when you look back at our balance sheet, we never put free cash on there because we're not positive we're going to have free cash. So, it's just responsible not to. However, each year when we do, we utilize it. So, I still think that that's certainly going to be a viable target and we can pull it off. Earmarking, 1.5 million in capital, it's still there. We do, we still, we don't have much capital here purposely per protocol. October is capital time and we'll be working throughout the year to make sure we're at 1.5. A contribution of a half million to stabilization, we still 100% plan on doing so. We know it's important to Chairman Chris Warren and it's important to myself as well on this board. OPEB, at this time, we're sticking with the 600,000 in the operational budget. We had on here, if we have a really stellar year, we'll look to appropriate some more. It's been, this operational budget's been a lot going on at this time and it gets responsible to keep it at 600,000.
Zach, we're at leaps, still leaps and bounds ahead of other communities, right?
100%, yes. So, very much.
It's responsible and to the benchmark of other communities, we're way ahead.
Aggressive, absolutely.
So, good place to be.
Yes, it is. We talked about replenishing the compensated absence fund. We are doing so at this annual town meeting, 100,000. We talked about the potential to replenish the injured on-duty fund. It's not in a position right now where we need to do so. We'll look at it in October. And actually, Town Administrator Vilani came to me last week with a nice third-party reimbursement check, so we may not even have to touch that this year. But we'll revisit that as we approach the special town meeting. We came to this board with the Benefits Coordinator talking about replenishing the health insurance mitigation plan. That will be happening this annual town meeting as well. We also talked about the Retirement Board with the support of the Selectmen and the support of the FinCom approving a funding schedule that was a little more aggressive, having fully funding status by fiscal 35, we're pulling that off as well and the impact is within the operational budget via Article 4 this year. We talked about carrying $2 million forward, clearing snow and ice, and then using the remaining money to fund all monetary articles outside of the operational budget. We will be doing that at the next Selectmen meeting. We would have had our financial team meeting and we'll go over that in more detail at that point. We talked about the water company continued preparation. We have a few articles, a couple of articles in the annual town meeting this year. One, to make sure the pay scales remain competitive and two, to continue to the defense. We talked about the Geriatric and Woodland, just went over that. That was the goals and objectives, we're hitting on them as well. We talked about funding and Selectmen-appointed human resource position. We just talked about that at our earlier meeting. That's going to happen as well. Next point, we wanted to keep the operational budget at or less than 4%. Right now, we're trending around 5%. So, it's important to note that at the time we built this, the, the special ops funds that are going to be going into the Police Department budget at the time were article money. So, when that was article money, we were very much on target at that point. If we had pulled that out, we're, we're right around the 4% mark. So, to me, I still consider that a victory. We talked about a single tax rate increase of less than 3%, a little early to tell, but I, I think if we're going to hit on, that's why it's so important to meet the 3.2 million excess levy. If we hit there, that'll naturally fall into place as well. And finally, we wanted to be prepared to make sure that the cherry sheet did have, in fact, the $50,000 that it should be for the MWRTA. It is there, it's accounted for, and we're good to go. So, in one town meeting, we're really hitting on a lot of these goals and objectives. It's a good thing. It's, it's been a pretty wild budget year, but it's all coming together. It's all coming into place and I think we're going to be able to pull off everything we set out to do.
Great. Would that open it up?
Wow, that was a lot. You know, I continue to be impressed with the way we're managing our finances. I continue to be impressed. You know, we'll set some direction, but in all honesty, you know, you guys are the ones out executing every day and you guys are the ones coordinating how to get things right, how to make sure we're getting the most favorable rates, how to, how to make sure we're, you know, not only good today, but good tomorrow, next year, and next month. This is really great news. And again, I continue to be impressed with the status of our finances. We knew we threw you a curveball. For that, we apologize. But at the same time, that curveball that we threw this year was really about the safety of kids and what we see going on nationally. It still feels right and given the status of our balance sheets, it feels even better right now. And I appreciate you taking that, what is a 12-hour request to come in and massaging it through the process. It remains to be seen how well this will work and we'll, we'll understand that. But nice job. Great presentation. I don't have any questions, so. And they know I would ask if I had to.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions either. You gentlemen always do a great job of presenting to us. We get the information well in advance. We can, can marinate, we can go through it. So, I appreciate that as always. Thank you.
And, you know, I would like to say what I said earlier in my opening statements about this community. Here's another example of this community where we're so fortunate to have people, Zach, like yourself, Tommy, like yourself, and Chris, you as Chairman of the Finance Committee. Phenomenal job.
And Rick as well.
Yeah, and Rick, yeah. And, and, and people need to understand how fortunate we are to have people like you that serve and every single day try and do the right thing for this community. And what you just presented, Zach, is an exact example of year after year after year, you guys work together with the best interests of the taxpayers of this community at heart and do the right thing. And I want to say thank you as well. Thank you and great job and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we'll have the motions you need and we'll see in the next few minutes. We're going to do some things under Old Business.
Right. Excellent. So, I did, Tom had a couple articles this year, be his first articles ever. I know he's super excited about them. He did have a couple handouts. I think you put them out already.
Yeah, I sent it out to everybody. And the first article I'll have will be Article 28, which is, I was in here for a year ago when, when the different budgets and articles were presented and approved. Well, here we are now as we look through all the articles and if you look at the spreadsheet of the far left will show you what town meeting these articles were approved in. Well, here we are. They're pretty much closed. Many of them are satisfied. One of the largest ones is the Middle School East, 110,000. Now that it's sold, we won't need those funds, so we're moving to, the total amount is 168,000 to pass through, closing out these articles and moving on into the General, General Fund for further use. And, I mean, I've listed 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 11 of them that are ready for closing.
This will enhance our free cash position for next year to be able to achieve more of what I described earlier, so it's a good thing.
And Tom, that's the net of 168, 52?
Yeah.
That's, okay, so that's the 10 articles.
Yeah.
You know, I have to note, just an observation, your oldest article here is only three years old.
Well, Selectman Buckley, I mean, I, I think that you can say that now because I think that Zach's been very active on pulling the reins on, on those in the last two or three years in which we've had articles on the books from, for long periods of time where the money was getting stale and wasn't being used. Zach and, and his department has done a great job of getting these in and say, hey, either use it or lose it. And if you don't need the money, let's, let's get it back into the, the General Fund. And that's why you're seeing that they're only, I'll say only, three or four years old now.
Do you know there are a lot of communities that are going back and looking at 15, 20-year-old articles to clean them up? So, you know, to be three years looking back and keeping a constant refresh on this, great work.
Okay, and the second article I'll have is Article 29. And this is the transfer of funds. It's really a more of a cleanup exercise where within funds, it's going to be no added cost to the town, to the taxpayers, or to the budgets. But this is a matter of reallocating within the budgets that are currently in place. Okay? And, and I have listed here eight of them that we've tagged that we're going to need to transfer within their budgets to account for expenses.
And many of these are very much routine. Example, Tom and I's budget are on there. When, when Wendell resigned, Tom came in, there was a gap, paid our vacation, stuff like that, different contract. At the time of the original Article 4, we didn't know that was going to happen. So, little bit of cleanup here. There's nothing too wild. The most, there's two kind of notable ones here. One is with the Police Department with $30,000. And that has to do with gasoline expenditures as well as they had a pretty excessive year with repairing the street lighting. And a lot of, we're fortunate enough to have the assessor into one of Chairman Warren's meetings early on, which we identified 85,000 of surplus money, in which we kind of quickly jumped on. The other one is Sewer. It's a contractual situation. It's, should be noted, it's bolt, it's coming bolt from within the enterprise fund as it must happen. So, he's taking it from one of his repair and maintenance items and moving it up as a result of contract negotiations.
So, Zach, am I able to understand, so Article 28 and Article 29, which are both Tommy's, cost to the community is, you have it listed on the report, is zero. Is that because of?
So, one is closing out articles, actually making money off.
Right.
It's 168. The other one is just transferring within an already appropriated budget. Yeah, my favorite, when I've been saying it for going up there and giving the spiel for years, and you might follow through with it as well, is when we do Article 4 trillion estimate, you know, people try their best to stay within it, but stuff does happen. Retirements, you get sick, you need to bring someone in, contract negotiations, things like that. And they only have eight of them here. It's a pretty good deal.
Very good. My point is, Tom, your first two articles you bring to town meeting, the cost, the impact to the community is zero.
Pretty good.
Nice job. Nice job.
Got a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So, you mentioned the $30,000 for the Police Department going over budget. And you mentioned street light repair. So, if I'm not mistaken, if we bill third parties, that comes back to the General Fund in a different line item.
Yes.
It doesn't, so it can drive, it can drive Police Department into deficit. But the net, when we recover from insurance companies, the damage, we're not recovering all of them, but we're recovering some because people observe these damage and people drive away or the vehicle's disabled and we bill the insurance company. It drives an account into deficit, but at the same time, money's coming back to replenish that money. It just doesn't go to the same place and they never meet up.
There you go.
Until the next year.
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, if the Police Chief had control over how many people hit our streetlights, I'm sure he'd have the dollar value at zero.
Yep.
So, okay. I just wanted to note that because it does go back to the General Fund when we clear it at the end of the.
There is hardly any exceptions of when revenue can go back to a budget.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Will? I'm also, good. All right, gentlemen.
Nice job.
Thank you very much. Have a good night. Thank you. Next agenda item, Agenda Item is Milford TV Annual Report. How are you, gentlemen?
Good, Harry.
Good.
Good evening. Thanks for having us.
You're welcome. Go right ahead.
So, I know Rob gave you the nice binder and I don't know if he'll do some introductory remarks, but.
Um, yeah, just another great year for Milford TV. We continue to, you know, push ourselves. It's not that we're in any competition with anyone else, but we've been told that for many other cable access outlets and other people in the industry, that we have one of the nicest facilities, we have one of the better-run facilities in the state and, not trying to be cocky or arrogant or anything like that, it just, that's what we hear all the time.
Fact.
I'd like to say it's fact, yeah. But again, there's still plenty of things that we look to build on and improve on, so we can go over that with you if you have anything that you think we can improve on. But at the same time, I think that my staff, Liz, Mike, Daniel, and Tim, we all kind of look at each other to push each other forward and to do bigger and better things every year. And I think we've done that this past year.
Absolutely. I'm on behalf of the board. I mean, Rob does an excellent job as the Executive Director. Every year, he sets the bar higher and meets it and gets right over it. And a lot of exciting things coming. We've recently expanded our space. We have Studio B. And, you know, we've been able to, as the Treasurer, responsible for overseeing the finances, and we've been able to maintain a debt-free balance sheet, which is something we've worked hard to do. So, we're fiscally conservative, but at the same time, we also make investments into the organization so that we can continue to have the latest technology and provide quality content.
And I'm Steve Mincello. I'm also on the Board of Directors. And I really have to build upon what Rob was saying. I really have hardly anything to do with the finances of it, other than going to the meetings, but the production of it, I, I pay close attention to. And I think Rob was totally understating what his staff does, what he does in his staff, to the point that I, I teach a video class, video classes up at Worcester State. And now, I used to get kids into Channel 5 and Channel 4 and Channel 7 for internships. Now they want to go to Milford TV. And there's a good reason for it because they don't want to just go out and get coffee. They want to actually work. And I really mean this, if you could just see what Rob and his staff does with the high school kids that are coming there every day. You know, I, I grew up here, we were hanging around a pool hall. Now they're hanging around MTV. I mean, they, really, they do. And, and I am astounded at the, the caliber after they've been there a year or so, what these kids are doing. The college kids also want to be there. I know there's a new one, Jay, that's, that's there with you and he's going to be outstanding too.
Just a revolving door. I mean, today was a great example. There were two games that we covered simultaneously. We did softball live on our live stream on one end of the high school facility and then we did, we covered boys lacrosse. And we were able to do And we were able to do that because we bought another piece of equipment called the Roadie, which is a live switcher that we can bring out on the road. I won't get too technical, but essentially, we've set ourselves up for scenarios like that, where, you know, if there's two events in town that we want to cover, that are important to people, we've managed to maintain an inventory of equipment that'll allow us to do that, and also the amount of volunteers that'll allow us to do that. So, helping me cover the lacrosse was Nealan Reisman, who's a senior at the high school who wants to do, who's interested in broadcast and commentary, and he was able to help me on that broadcast of that game. And over on the other side, on the softball side of things, Tim was working with John Giacomoozzi, who's a high school senior who's going to a very technical audio college for school. So, he gets to work with technical stuff all day. You mentioned Jay. We've also had Anthony Mazzini, who's done commentary with Tim Coet, and now he's doing commentary up at Syracuse. So, there's just this revolving door of, and these kids come back. Tim Rassidi, who went to Emerson, is now going to UMass, he comes and helps out in the summer with the Legion baseball games. So, all these kids are getting experience behind the cameras, in front of the cameras, on the mics, and it just extends further into their careers.
Very nice.
Bill? Maybe just go over the net result of the treasurer's report, and I wanted to ask a question. I think the la, was it last year's, was the last audited, third-party audited results?
Correct, yeah, so our year-end is June 30th, so towards the beginning, we have our financial statements in the second tab, so that's our audited financial statements. And then we'll be up again this coming June for our next audited financial statements. So, that would be in the second tab there.
Sometimes the reporting's a bit confusing, because I do date it December, because that's the first year we met in December, right around then, and now we've been meeting later in the year, but we wait till those financial statements come back. Sometimes we don't go, like, I got those back at the end of March, so.
So, we can get a complete package, but we could break, we could change the cycle on that if it's helpful. And then we do, we meet quite regularly. I do a full budget actual analysis every quarter, so those are included in the treasurer reports as well. And we built out a five-year budget, and then we do upcoming year by quarter, so we can look at how everything's trending and make adjustments as needed. But most of our expenses are rent, personnel, production supplies, and fairly, you know, we're able to kind of project those out and control them, so.
Great.
More often than not, we don't have any surprises in there.
Yeah. I noticed that, and I appreciate it, you give great detail. This is, a lot of folks can learn a lot about audit report financials.
Everybody can learn something from Josh.
I do it for my day job too, so I have some, I have a little practice.
So, it does have the auditor's report from Stowe and Dagan?
Correct.
But it has the executive summary. Is the full report something you consider getting to us?
It should. Being there.
That is the full report.
Yeah, so it has the financial statements, and then the footnotes and disclosures, so you have your.
So, is there, and I'm not fishing for bad news.
Oh, did they have like an opinion?
Yeah, recommendations, things you ought to consider for next year?
So, they have their, they gave us an unqualified opinion, so they didn't have any findings that would indicate that there was any concerns or problems, so.
Yeah, and findings, by the way, aren't just concerns or problems, but they may be things that you may want to consider to take advantage of new, new financial processes or whatever that aren't necessarily going to reflect negative on the organization, they just may mean ways in which you want to do things.
Sure.
So, there's nothing?
We've done it, yeah, we've done it more informally with them, so one thing that they recommended in a prior year was, you know, updating some of our policies and procedures around conflict of interest, retention of documents, technology, whistleblower policy, so we made that a much more robust process, and now we do annual statement for all employees and things. So, that was a recommendation from the prior year, which we've put in place.
That's great. It's good to see an auditor making those types of recommendations. And if there's a way to do.
We could do a form.
Formalize it.
Yeah, sometimes they do like a management letter.
Admit it to writing, because sometimes people transfer, people go to other jobs, and sometimes even us, from an oversight position, you know, have an obligation to see what types of things they're recommending.
Absolutely, yeah.
By the way, we may learn from your audit that we have to refresh some things as well, so.
Their point.
Just an observation.
Yeah, no, absolutely, we can definitely.
It's all good news.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Not critical at all.
No, absolutely, that's something that's not uncommon for auditor. I used to be an auditor in my previous life, so, yeah, we used to call the management letter, and then it's when they make kind of recommendations.
Yeah, yeah, if we could get those in the future, that'd be great. And the only other observation is, maybe we want to take some of the burden off of the staff for inventory and make a different determination of what is capital, because when you're inventorying, you know, BNC cables, you know, there's a certain amount of, you know, loss that's understood, cables break, ends fall, ends get damaged.
I have actually cut down on a lot of stuff that we, that's.
But do it based on a dollar value, that's all I'd recommend.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we do have a threshold, probably can revisit now that we've grown as an organization. Certainly, when we were first starting off, you know, everything was a big purchase, and we did, we had to borrow, we had a line of credit, so.
Yeah.
That's a good observation, and, you know, while we're very thorough, we also want to be practical in terms of cost and benefit there.
And I did notice, one last thing, and I'll stop, I promise, I did notice there was good documentation for items that were lost. We know you're going to be out on the field, we know sometimes somebody leaves behind something in the grass, and, you know, it's gone, run over by a mower the next day in a field or whatever, and so that happens, it's a naturally occurring thing, you want to minimize that. I know there's not a lot of it, so it's not happening a lot, but I appreciate the thoroughness of the report when you do things like that and make those notes.
Thanks, yeah, and that's one area that we've actually been really, really lucky these past five years, that we haven't had a big, you know, like a camera getting broken or lost or stolen, like a big ticket item. So, that's why we're kind of, we feel safe that we have a little bit of a kitty, you know, compiled in our bank account, so that if, when that, because it's going to happen, something's going to break, they always do.
Yeah, they do.
We've been really lucky there, too, so.
Right, and Rob's been great with our vendors, he usually negotiates very favorable, you know, agreements with them, so we have good repair and maintenance type things, and, you know, it's, the vendor often comes out to our facility to showcase, you know, some of our work to others, so.
And also training.
And training as well, yeah.
They're trained to use the equipment properly, and.
Makes a big difference.
And they respect that.
Mm-hmm.
It's a big deal, actually.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Will? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, Josh, I did get mine too, I left it on my desk.
Okay.
It's 30 miles out of reach right now, but thank you, I've told you this in the past, you're extremely thorough, and I really enjoy it, and it's just generally impressive. Steve, also, we're very lucky that you're on the board. I think, I've said this to you, you bring a wealth of knowledge that I think, you know, from a practical standpoint, as well as an academic, just, you know, you're serving as a resource in multiple capacities to the board and to the organization, so I very much appreciate that. And Rob, this is the most speaking I've done tonight, just being at this for a very long time, you've brought this place along with the support of your board, leaps and bounds. I enjoy going there, your staff's always, just from a customer's standpoint, they're unbelievable, they're well-natured, even the, you know, I mean, the high school kids and the college kids, they're just, they're just very mature, and it's just very impressive to deal with the studio, the second studio that we had our debates in and everything this past election cycle, just super impressive. So, the staff too, I just, I can't throw enough compliments to your staff, to you, and even to your interns, because, again, these are, these are young people, and they're just super mature and do everything they can to make your half an hour, hour, you know, pleasurable. Sometimes it's stressful, sometimes it's, we're running after work to try to get here, so, you know, we're not making Kevin or Al late and things like that, but I just wanted to say that, that we very much appreciate it from our bird's-eye view, so thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I speak for myself, but I know I speak for the three of us, is three, I can say now, former school committee members. Thank you very much for your support of the students at the high school and at the college We've all been in that studio many, many times over the years, and I can't tell you how many times I've been there, I still can't get my mic on right. And they come over and they're very patient, and they say, well, you want to put it here.
Why can't we figure that out?
I know, and you want to run the wire down here, and I'm like, you've got to be kidding me, I can't figure this out after all these years, but you know what, they're great, and it's, it's so encouraging to see where we're going in this community with education, that we understand that, that children are all different.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'm in the automobile industry, children that come to the TV station, you know, everybody in life is different, but they're finding their path, and the reason they're finding their path is because of a good place like Milford TV that says, come here, you know, let us work with you, this is, this is your interest, and we want to, we want to show you the road to where you might want to go. And I think, to your point, thank you for making that statement, that it's, it's encouraging to hear that instead of going to 4, 5, and 7, they'd rather come to Milford TV.
True.
And the reason they want to come to Milford TV is because of great people like yourselves that know that you care about them, you want to show them the right way, you know they're going to have an off day, and that's okay. And to your point, thank you very much, no, I don't need you to go chase my coffee, you know, I need you to sit here, and I'm going to show you how to run this camera, and I'm going to show you when something backfires, how you're going to handle it. But for me, the crowning moment of Milford TV was this year, the grand opening of Studio B.
Yeah.
And Rob, I've said this to you 100 times, I was blown away, not necessarily by the public officials that were there, but by the community members that came there. So, I'm going to give you an example, the Assistant Superintendent of Schools, and I think he lives in Framingham, not that it makes a difference, he drove all the way to the Milford, the town of Milford on a Saturday night at 6 o'clock to go to the grand opening of Studio B, and he brought his son. And they were just so fascinated by the whole concept, but if you looked and you walked around that night and you saw the people that were there, good community people, and there's an old saying that used to be said years ago, was, oh, I never, I never watched that, I never watched that. And then you'd be in a conversation with somebody, say, oh, the other night I saw you on Milford TV. Everybody watches it, everybody watches it.
220 YouTube, 220,000 YouTube hits? Did I say that? Am I quoting that correctly? That's all right, you don't have to.
I get it, I got to know it now.
He wants it.
Let's see, so, we have built, let's see, we have 15, 1,550 videos on there with a total of 3,54, 354,000 hits, so views.
154,000.
We have 758 subscribers right now, yeah.
Amazing.
So, thank you, yeah, the grand opening of Studio B was awesome, and you hit it on the head, and it was just, like, a lot of people from, you know, the community is a spectrum, you know, it's a lot of different people getting involved, you know, the elderly, the youth, and the, you know, you're involved with the youth center, they help out with us all the time. We helped them with the fundraiser that we held over the summer, within that fundraiser that, you know, six-hour telethon that we did for them, we raised $7,000, but everyone in the community got involved in that. So, you had, like, Dan Duess doing motorcycle tricks in the back parking lot, you had the football team come in and do this eating contest that was crazy, and then they played basketball, and the, you know, it was just amazing, jump ropers, and now we're going to do another fundraising event for the youth center, and it just, everyone getting involved and helping each other out, and I can't thank you guys enough because you keep supporting us. I mean, that, the ribbon cutting was just one of my favorite things of all time, and we got that nice citation framed, and it's hanging in Studio B now, so thank you for doing that for us, and, yeah, we just want to keep doing these things to help people, and that's what we're about, you know, we're not doing this to, you know, make millions, we're doing it to just have fun, and another point you made is that, you know, the kids can come in, and they, a good place to learn is always to fail, and, you know, we're not under any pressure, outside of the pressure that we put on ourselves to create this programming. You know, we don't have, you know, advertisers breathing down our neck, so, you know, if someone messes up on camera, it's a good learning experience, and I just wish that I had that early in my career, and so I just want to build a place like that for people to learn. And, yeah, we just want to push ourselves, and sports is big in Milford, and we try to support all the athletic teams and Legion baseball and stuff like that, and it trickles down to everybody, everybody gets involved in those sporting events. And then also, we're trying to do a lot with music and art, I mean, if you come into our facility, it's not just, we tell people all the time, it's not just a TV studio, so actually, right now, I'm looking at the town seal, we have that big wall on the outside of Studio B, and for the last couple months, we've had seven different artists from the Black Zone Valley Art Association painting a big giant revolving mural, so we have Town Hall up there, we have the town seal, we have the old train station up there now, Memorial Hall. I put a post on Instagram, you can follow us on Instagram, but, yeah, that's the kind of stuff that goes on there. People come in, hang their art, record music, you could record a podcast there, it's a media center, not just a TV studio.
Right, right. And Mr. Chairman, if I could, one, one last thing, and that's that, I think the most satisfying thing, and I probably say this every year when I come here, the most satisfying thing is, yes, there are plenty of students that are there, and probably most of those kids are going to be successful anyways, but it's the kids that you've turned around, and they've taken a number of kids there that, for whatever reason, maybe loners, or they don't fit in properly, like you said, there's many different ways of learning, you know, and, and really, they nurture these, those kids especially. I mean, I, I won't obviously say any names, but I've seen some incredible growth, and I don't want to be a sexist here, but Liz is amazing as a nurturer, nurturer of these kids, and as a teacher, and then the support from everybody else in the staff, it's, it's really a miraculous thing to watch, actually.
And I have to agree with you, because, you know, the many times that I've been there, and I would see a new student in the studio, very shy, had a hard time with eye contact, but wanted to learn, and then a year later, I go back for another interview, or six months I go back, and that's the, that's the student that's helping me put the microphone on, that I can't figure out how to put it on, looking at me, you know, good evening, Mr. Walsh, and, you know, you give them a purpose, you give them a purpose, and we all need a purpose in life, and that's, that's just one of the many things that that station does. But I think another important thing that people can't lose sight of is that you bring all news local. So, not only do you interview the Board of Selectmen, and the School Committee, and the Finance Committee, and all the different boards in Town Hall, you interview the state representative, you interview the state senator, and you interview the chairman of the board of the hospital, so you bring everything local, so that, you know, as a community member, you want to get caught up in the community events, all you got to do is turn on Milford TV, it's all right there, it's all right there. So, with that, I want to say, great job, keep up the good work, thank you for the report, I'm sure it's a lot of work, but thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Have a good night, guys.
All right, see you.
See you, sir.
Thanks.
See you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job. You want to jump out of order a little bit?
Sure.
I want a couple blessings. Okay, so we're going to jump out of order just a little bit, we're going to go to new business first, that way Father Mateos can get home. So, the first new business agenda is Milford Baseball Association Parade. Dear Members of the Board, Milford Baseball Annual Opening Day Saturday mornings are scheduled for Saturday, April 28, 2018. A parade will start at Lions Club Pavilion at Plains Park and proceed to Rosenfeld Park for a brief speaking program. The parade will begin at 10:30 a.m. As in the past, we look forward to your attendance. Can I have a motion for acceptance?
Actually, just an FYI, but just, there isn't a request in that, right? There's no.
Not really, they've shortened the parade.
No permit to obstruct or anything?
They've shortened the parade a little bit this year, it doesn't go as far, but they just want to notify the board.
Okay. Because they don't leave the park anymore.
They really kind of don't.
Yeah, they stay behind the.
They walk on the trail.
Route used to be downtown, it used to be a different type of route, they obviously want to. Route used to be downtown. It used to be a different type of route. They obviously wanna invite all three of you gentlemen, if you'd like.
Yeah, the chairman does usually say something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So that's just, uh, a letter letting us know. Okay, next is from the Chief of Police, a traffic aide. In response to your email and information that you received from Mrs. Kara and I apologize for it, Zozaro. I subided the intersection in the area of Muriel Lane and Covino Road on both a weekday and weekend day. In response, I concur with Mrs. Zozaro's suggestion. I would recommend that the Board of Selectmen authorize a stop sign on Covino Road at the intersection with Muriel Lane.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Second it.
And I would vote in the affirmative. All right, Father.
There we go.
Here you are. All right. All right. This one is a permit to obstruct. And I got confused because described in the detail what you plan to do, placement of an electronic reader board at the Middle School East. And then I, I lost, an obstruction of Winter Street between Main Street and Granite Street. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Okay. Indicate exact location. Forty-five Main Street sidewalk, May nineteenth to June second. This is when you're gonna have your?
Yeah, the, the electronical, uh, reader.
Okay. So how?
Mr. Chairman, if I might interrupt, obviously when we filed this, we didn't own, uh, we did own, excuse me, Middle School East. Now we do not. I have spoken with Father, asked him to reach out to Mr. Lobesser in case there is.
Which I did, yeah.
And I have spoken with Kevin also, and he was very amenable to whatever you really wanna do.
And this is the police, the police department's electronic board?
Uh, I don't think so. He's got his, yeah.
You have your own?
Yes.
So you're not really obstructing a sidewalk, or are you?
So I just wanna explain. So the obstruction of Inter Street is for the parish festival.
Yes.
Which is June second, from five to, uh, midnight. So I need the obstruction from the parking lot of Richdale, Richdale's, um, the new store there to Granite Street, right?
Yeah.
And that's just for June second. Then the obstruction of the sidewalk, uh, is at Ma- um, Middle School East.
Some newer name.
Yes.
Right.
From May nineteenth to the day of the event, because I'm planning to put there the electronic board reader to
advertise.
advertise the, the, the event.
Okay, so these are, these are ours.
Yeah.
If he's gonna, it's, uh, it was unclear, so I just wanna make sure if you're gonna be, if you need Kevin's permission, he's more than willing.
I, I got his permission.
And I know you've checked with the, with the police chief and he's fine with your, with your layout, so I don't see any issues, Mr. Chairman.
So just once again, Father, for clarity, so your first, your first thing you wanna do is you wanna put an electronic sign?
Yes.
On the sidewalk in front of?
Middle School East.
Middle School East?
Yes.
Okay. And that's gonna be there from when to when?
Two weeks. So it's May?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth till June?
Second.
Second.
And the electronic sign you're gonna use is the police department's electronic sign?
It's a private one.
Oh, private. Okay. Okay.
So I have it now.
Yeah, there's two, there's two requests.
Right. Yeah, exactly.
So, Mr. Chairman, for clarity, why don't I try this? Um, I understand the, the requirements and it's really not Middle School East, so it's a permit to obstruct a sidewalk at forty-five Main Street from the nineteenth of May to June second. Um, I would motion to approve that as well as the permit to obstruct Winter Street from Richard's, Richdale's store or Main Street to Granite Street on June second from five PM to twelve AM.
Which is a one-day request.
That's a one-day request, just June second. Um, so I'd move that, uh, we approve those.
I'll second that.
I would vote in the affirmative as well, Father.
I had the same question you had. The next one.
Second one. This is a fundraiser for the parish. It's gonna be at Saint Mary's Parish Hall.
Yes.
Six PM to twelve AM. And you're looking for a one-day wine and beer license.
Beer license, exactly. Correct.
So this is a one-day event, May twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, six PM to twelve AM.
Absolutely.
Move, Mr. Chairman?
Second it.
And I would vote in favor of that.
Thank you so much. I think.
Sorry.
One more.
There's one more.
One more below it. The June second event.
Yes.
Wine and malt also, one day. Right below the one you just, yeah, there you go.
So this now is?
So we approve May twelfth. Now we just have to do the same exact thing for May, for June second.
Exactly. For the festival, yeah.
Brazilian County Festival, same thing, seventeen Winter Street, um, one-day wine and beer license.
Yes.
For the festival, which is going to go again, six PM to twelve AM.
Actually, five. Did I put six there?
It's got six.
Uh, it's amended here. I'd make a motion that we approve the one-day, uh, beer and wine license for the, uh, Saint Mary's Festival for June second, and the time is five PM to twelve AM.
Twelve AM.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much.
It's good.
Thank you for that.
Just wanna take the time to invite all the communities. Uh, it's a wonderful event, family, um, just like a big parish fair. So everybody is more than welcome to participate. We're gonna have a great time.
And you got your prayers in early so that it won't rain, right?
Absolutely.
Good thinking.
Hey, I'm the right side.
Thank you, Father.
Thank you.
See you there. Just a question. Is the, is the Pope gonna make it or?
I don't think so.
Busy?
I don't think so.
Did you invite them?
No.
Not yet? Email them.
But I will.
All right. Thank you, Father.
All right, not a problem. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Father.
Take care.
And the last new business, Rick, Dog Officer hearing?
Uh, yes, there were two hearings, Mr. Chairman. The first, Rochelle Thompson, Animal Control Officer, v. John Falcone and Janet Higgins. The hearing was held on April fifth pursuant to General Law Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven, upon written complaint of Animal Control Officer Rochelle Thompson, um, dated March seventh of this year. She alleged vicious disposition and disturbance and annoyance by a dog owned or harbored by John Falcone and Janet Higgins. Uh, after hearing, uh, the following, uh, I make the following findings of fact. Janet Higgins resides at Two Linden Road, Milford, and is the owner of a neutered male Chow Retriever mixed dog aged seven named Sam. John Falcone resides at five San Clemente Circle, Milford. Mr. Falcone frequently has possession of the dog at his, uh, home. On numerous occasions, the dog Sam was wandering in the San Clemente neighborhood without supervision and non, not on a leash. Six separate citations for an unleashed dog were issued by the Animal Control Officer. I find that Sam is an annoyance and a disturbance to the neighborhood pursuant to General Law Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven. I find Sam is a nuisance dog. Uh, it is the recommendation of the hearing officer as follows. Sam shall not be allowed outside either on or off the Falcone property without being on a leash. Sam shall not be tied to an inanimate object but must be on a leash when walked by hand. If the Falcones or Janet Higgins are found in violation of this order, Sam shall be subject to seizure and empowerment by the Milford Police Department and/or Animal Control Department. And further, Janet Higgins would be ordered to immediately surrender to the Milford Town Clerk the license and tag in her possession and be prohibited from licensing a dog within the Commonwealth for five years. This finding shall be reported to the Milford Town Clerk, excuse me, in accordance with General Law Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven H. And that is the findings of fact and recommendations, um, for that particular hearing.
Mr. Chairman, given the, uh, the review and very thorough review by the Dog Officer and Town Administrator, um, especially given the fact that there were six citations for this dog, to this owner. You know, we don't have a bad dog. What we have is somebody who's not ca- not caring for the animal. Um, I would take the recommendation, make a move that we take the recommendations of the Dog Officer and, um, Dog Hearing Officer and, uh, approve those.
I'll second that.
And real quick, Rick, before I vote in the affirmative, I, I just wanna make sure that we've sent a clear message to this owner. Cause I agree with Selectman Buckley is that, um...
Yes, the owner of the dog and also Mr. Falcone were present at the hearing. Uh, the owner didn't testify, but I can assure you a clear message was sent.
Thank you very much.
Based on her response, yeah. Um, the second hearing also held that night, uh, was on April fifth. Uh, again, pursuant to General Law Chapter one forty, Section fifty-seven, this was upon written complaint of Beverly A. Raymond of Pond Street in Milford, um, dated March twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, alleging vicious disposition and a disturbance and annoyance by a dog owned or harbored, harbored by Callie Bush of twelve, uh, Pond Street, uh, Milford. Um, after hearing, based upon the credible evidence presented, I make the following findings of fact. Beverly A. Raymond resides at eleven Pond Street. Callie Bush resides at twelve Pond Street and is the owner of a neutered male Lab mixed dog aged between three and four named Thomas. Um, Paul Beatrich resides at twelve Pond Street. On February twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen, the dog Thomas attacked Beverly suddenly and without provocation and severely bit Beverly A. Raymond on her right leg and right arm, breaking the skin. Ms. Raymond's injuries were serious in nature such that hospital and subsequent medical, medical care were required. Pursuant to General Law Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven, I find Thomas is a dangerous, uh, dog. It is a recommendation of this hearing officer as follows. Thomas shall be confined to the premises of Callie Bush, either securely confined indoors or outdoors in a securely enclosed and locked pen or dog run area. The pen or dog run area shall have a secure roof and if there is no floor, secure it to the sides. The sides shall be embedded in the ground for not less than two feet. Within the confines of such pen or dog run, a doghouse or proper shelter from the elements shall be provided to protect the dog. Ms. Bush will have thirty days from the date of this order construct the said locked pen or dog run area, and it shall be constructed to the satisfaction of Animal Control Officer Rochelle Thompson. When Thomas is removed from Ms. Bush's premises, he shall be securely and humanely muzzled and restrained with a chain or other tethering device, having a minimum tensile strength of three hundred pounds and not exceeding three feet, uh, in length. Thomas shall not be allowed outside either on or off the Bush property without being on a leash. If Callie Bush is found in violation of this order, Thomas shall be subject, subjected to seizure and empowerment by the Milford Police Department and/or Animal Control Department. And further, Callie Bush would be ordered to immediately surrender to the Milford Town Clerk the license and tag in her possession and be prohibited from licensing a dog within the Commonwealth for five years. This finding will be reported to the Milford Town Clerk in accordance with General Law Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven H. And that is the recommendation, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we accept the Dog Hearing Officer's recommendations in full.
I'll second that.
All right, we'll vote affirmative as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and with that, we'll go back up to old business.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things of, uh, business. I wonder if we could get an update at our next meeting? The status of the drainage work at Wendy's. I know, um, Town Administrator gave one last meeting. I'd like to have a rolling thing until that, that's closed down.
There has been some communication, yes. I can do that.
The other thing is, I wonder if we could request, uh, the, the police chief to look at the Stop and Shop one oh nine intersection and specifically where people are making that left, uh, crossing lanes, if there's anything we can do to prevent that from happening, whether it's barriers, um, the new parking lot arrangement is one thing. People used to make that left. And now what they're forced to do is go to the intersection at the light at McDonald's. And without a, a, a left turn that provides a yield to other direction, they don't have a guaranteed, uh, left turn. And maybe we look at that option as well. But, uh, right now we have a dangerous situation on one oh nine and at Stop and Shop. And I wonder if the chief could give us a report on that. And then lastly, Mr. Chairman, under old business, as his historical, the, the members, um, uh, vote on various articles, um, that they intend to support or, or ask that the board support. And I'm gonna say there are some easy things to pick from here. So in our previous meeting, we've automatically approved those from the Board of Selectmen. But I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Finance Director's Town Articles, the Treasurer's Town Articles, which is twenty-two, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and five.
Right.
Um, the other thing is we decided to go with the Articles for Town Meeting, From Town Meeting Advisory Board, seven, eight, nine, and ten. I would make a motion that we approve those as well. Um, then the Finance Committee's Article to Transfer Funds to Cover for Snow and Ice Deficit.
Which we have to do.
Yeah, I just think it's good that the Board of Selectmen, everybody know it's on board. And, and last and equally important, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, that we recommend favorably for Article twenty-one, which is amending a zoning bylaw, two-point-three, over fifty-five residential use. The reason why, um, I'd like to, uh, show our support for that is the builder has by right the ability to knock that building down and make a commercial property. The builder has subsequently given us in the community an option to where he may be able to save that building and create over fifty-five, uh, residential space, over fifty-five age restricted, uh, which is consistent with the laws. I think it's important that this, this board show, uh, a preference and support that residential use and the, uh, conceptual drawings we received. And, uh, people know where we stand on that. So again, that's Article twenty-one. If you wanna take that separately and we'll do the others, um, all in one group, I'd be happy to. Or if you'd like to put them together, I'd be happy to.
I'd like to take that one separately only because I have a question on it, but I'm fine with the other.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
So the, the motion is to, uh, so, motion for the Board of Selectmen to support Articles twenty-two, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, Article five, seven, eight, nine, and ten. Article twenty-seven, we'll come back to twenty-one in a minute. So that's the motion.
I'll second it.
And I would vote in the affirmative.
Now, do you want a separate motion for twenty-one?
I do. And the question that I have is that amending the zoning bylaw, two-point-three, over fifty-five residential, and I'm one hundred percent in support of the project. The question I have from Rick, and maybe you can answer it to me or can answer it to me. Is that particularly the neighborhood across the street, or is that gonna affect?
It's a, it's a, I'm sorry.
It's not, it's not specific to that property.
It's not a site.
It's specific to a zoning district.
Yes.
As I understand it, yes.
Fairly limited.
Yes, it is.
It is.
In what way?
The zone.
Right.
It has a, uh, an area, uh, an area dimension to it, I believe.
Same as.
Uh, yeah, and, um, but it does not extend. I think Planning Board is looking for an extension further.
Yeah.
But yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know where you are, Will, with that. I was, can we put that to our next meeting, just so we get a little more clarity?
When's our next meeting?
Uh, May seventh.
Yeah. Is there not, not a second at the moment, or?
Um, I'm letting you guys talk. If you made a motion, I, I'll certainly second it. Um, I think this is important.
Now, we second it for discussion.
Second it for discussion. I, whether we have time to it the next meeting, I can go either way, but I, I, if, if it's a question of supporting, um, that project that...
I just need more clarity on it, Rick. It seems vague to me.
Okay.
And it's just me. Maybe it's me.
Well, the article, when you read this, when you read the article, it's not vague at all, but if you're looking for like a, just an executive type of summary for the, for the entire article, it's, yeah.
Like it's over fifty-five residential permitted, uh, provided a special permit is first obtained. Um, and then they have, uh, it gets somewhat specific.
Max number of bedrooms?
Yep.
To two?
Two persons only, at least one of which is fifty-five years age or older. Um, maximum number of dwelling units shall be determined by the number of off-street parking spaces. Um, within the CA zone, over fifty-five resident users may be allowed only above the first floor. First floor shall be considered the floor at Main Street level. So it does extend more than that particular, uh, property. So let me say that. Maximum number of bedrooms, as, as Will indicated, is two per dwelling unit. Um, boarding and rooming house units shall not be permitted, um, on any, uh, floor within the same building. Um...
And that language has been worked out with Town Planner as well.
Town Planner has been very much involved in this language, yeah.
So he's, is he on board with this one?
He has helped work the, this is something he has worked with them.
Okay.
With them, uh, them being, uh, Kevin, Attorney Antonellis, and I believe their engineer and/or architect. So.
Parking is addressed?
Uh, parking, uh, they provide one point seven-five on-street, on-site off-street parking, uh, spaces for each, uh, unit except, uh, within the CA zoning district. Then the applicant has to demonstrate binding legal availability through lease easement or other approved method of one point seven-five dedicated off-street parking spaces for each unit.
And I, and I think the, a big difference is when it says within the CA zone, over fifty-five resi- residential uses may be allowed only above the first floor, while within the CB zone, over fifty-five residential uses may be allowed only on parcels of one-point-five acres in area.
Correct.
So, as for the Middle School East project, they're gonna have residential on all floors.
That is correct.
Because it's over the, is that what I'm understanding correctly?
That's my understanding.
There was never a commercial use there, wherein the other districts, there is commercial use. They wanted to maintain that ability to have commercial.
Okay, so Bill, your motion again is?
Uh, to move to support that, show the Board of Selectmen support for that Middle School East, saving of that building and reclaiming it for fifty-five rather than tearing it down and voting for commercial.
And I'll second that.
And after a better explanation, thank you, I will also support that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so, last agenda item.
Um, just, if I may, just have a brief administrator report?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know we did jump around, that's okay.
I did have some old business.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I don't care. I don't care whether we cut back or not.
Why don't you go first? You go first.
I had asked at the last meeting that we schedule either within executive session or we, only because it was already an executive session issue, and whether we talked briefly in open session. I do want us to revisit the retirement, I'm sorry, vacation time request for retired firefighters, Rob Lorenzo and Ted DiPaolo.
Yes.
And I will make that in the form of a motion if I have to.
We do have it scheduled for the next meeting.
You do, okay, yes. Awesome. Thank you.
Bill had asked for something too. I forget what it was, but Rick and I had talked about it.
We also have that scheduled, yeah.
Right, they're both, both your requests are on the next meeting, Selectmen's meeting.
Okay. It was just important, and I think we still make it, that, at least with the issue that I brought up, that they're going to arbitration relatively soon, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, so they, we, they're both on.
Okay.
Yeah, the arbitration, I think, is June, so.
Great. Okay, good.
Yeah, I should have informed you of that, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Town Administrator.
Okay, just very great to thank you.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. No, no, no problem. I just wanna update the board on the progress, requesting permission from Verizon to attach the flags to the utility poles. We've completed and submitted the municipal decorative pole agreement, attachment agreement. The next step is to do the survey of the poles owned by Verizon. Fire Chief Tui completed the survey, has submitted an application for the forty flag permits to Verizon. I'm happy to report Verizon has approved the survey, and we can now purchase the flags. Jason Mack, the veteran, has raised the money to purchase the flags. In fact, just came down and did deliver a check in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. Highway Scott Surveyor and his committee and his team will now look to purchase the flags so that we make sure they're of like-kind in nature to the ones we have. I want to publicly thank Jason Mack for his efforts in raising money for the flags. Probably suggest that maybe the board have him in at some time when we get going on the project. I do wanna also thank Fire Chief Tui for his hard work in completing the survey. I just received the check. If the board were so inclined, they could vote to accept the gift tonight. If not, we will put this on the agenda for May seventh. The only reason I would suggest tonight is I'd like to have the money available to use. You know, there's an honoring time, and obviously there's installation, you know, Memorial Day is coming, and that's a great time of year, so.
I'd move to accept.
And I'll second that.
The check, which is a donation, I think, from a lot of people, including Mr. Mack.
Yes.
It was a GoFundMe, I think.
Yeah, Mr. Mack was kind of the...
Spearhead.
Spearhead of it, but my understanding is numerous donations, yes.
Okay.
And anybody who donated, thank you.
That's great.
Two other things quickly.
Yeah.
Middle School East, I think we just talked about it. We obviously completed the sale on Friday. We have canceled all expenses, such as utilities and the like, for the building. A big one we canceled, obviously, was the insurance. That was a difficult one, and as presented tonight, we're returning the balance appropriated to the town at the May tenth meeting. I just wanna bring one other thing to the board's attention. I think the board is well aware of the opioid-tort litigation. I just wanna give the board some information that I've previously provided to you. Basically, there is a filing against basically the world's largest pharmaceutical manufacturers and distributors, and the theory of the lawsuit is to seek to hold them accountable for their role in the devastating opioid epidemic. Massachusetts Opioid Litigation Attorneys, they're a consortium of six national and three local law firms joining together to file the lawsuit. They're suing on behalf of individual municipalities. The lawsuits could then be consolidated for pre-trial and discovery purposes. They're not suing individual doctors or pharmacists. They believe the most effective approach to this litigation is to focus on the primary sources of the epidemic. The town will not have, should the town opt to join, the town will not have to bear the cost of the litigation. The attorneys in their firms will front all costs of the lawsuit, and will only get paid for a verdict or settlement. I have spoken with one of the lead attorneys. His name is Tucker Merrigan. He's of the Sweeney Merrigan Law Firm. He's one of the Massachusetts firms. Should the board so choose, he'd be willing to attend a meeting to discuss. If the board is ready to make a decision on whether or not to join, I would recommend that we go with attorney Tucker Merrigan. Again, it's a number of law firms joining together. This is a very large lawsuit, and these are experienced firms in handling this type of litigation. So, I just wanted to present that to the board, get some direction from the board as to what you would like to do or not do, and then I can proceed, or the board, and I can proceed accordingly.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have no issue at all joining this lawsuit. Matter of fact, I think pharmaceutical companies have played a role and should be held culpable for their participation in the way they presented the drugs, the way, um, in large part, the way doctors were incentivized to distribute them. I think there's, I think there's merit to a case, and I think there's no cost to us. Those attorneys will get paid handsomely, I'm certain of that. But at the same time, um, there may be some way to recover what we've asked taxpayers to pay for, and that's dollars put in an opioid fund to help the police chief and, um, various aspects of recovery, getting people into recovery. I see nothing wrong with it, and it makes sense.
I'll second that.
And before, I again vote affirmative, and I hate to keep bringing up personal things, but, um, the way that the medication is being distributed is, and sometimes I get it, sometimes it's necessary, but even today, it's still, so I guess I won't say anymore before I step out of bounds, but I would vote in the affirmative as well. We need to take a stand. We need to show the, you know, the people in this community that we, as a board, care, and that we wanna help the people that are providing the care every single day. So I would, I would vote in favor.
Okay, I'll reach out to attorney Merrigan.
Yes.